On the 2017 fiscal year Southbridge Town Budget. Item number one, I'm opening the public hearing just a few minutes late at about 20 of 7 o'clock. Item number one on the agenda is the public hearing. Under the agenda, it's a general government, $12,864,050, public safety. I guess we should do them one at a time. Do them one at a time. Does anyone have any comments as it relates to the general government budget of $12,864,050? Going once. Does anyone have any comment on the general government budget? Okay, thank you. Moving on, public safety, $5,973,145. Does anyone have any comments with regard to the public safety budget for the town of Does anyone have any comments on the public safety budget? Okay, moving on to the Department of Public Works. Does anyone have any comments with regard to the public works budget? It's going to be a quick meeting. One last time, does anyone have any comments regarding the public works budget? Human services, $1,592,448. Does anyone have any comments with regard to the human services budget? Are there any comments with regard to the human services budget? Seeing none, on to Bay Path. Bay Path, $1,055,213. Would anyone like to comment on the Bay Path budget? One last time, would anyone like to make any comment with regard to the Bay Path budget? Moving on to the school department, $26,87,400. Would anyone like to make any comments regarding the school department budget? Moving on, sewer enterprise fund, $4,224,918. Would anyone like to comment on the sewer enterprise fund budget? Would anyone like to comment on the sewer enterprise fund budget? Seeing none. Water enterprise fund budget, $3,876,567. Would anyone like to comment on the water enterprise fund budget? Would anyone like to comment on the water enterprise fund budget? Okay, that is the last of the department budgets. The total budget is $57,747,442. With that, going to adjourn. One more time, does anyone have any comments on the budget? Mr. Marquetti, please give your name and address.
Mike Marquetti, 120 Maria Avenue. I would ask that the councilors tonight not pass this budget, simply because it relies too much on concierge royalty money. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? With that, I'm going to close the public hearing at, it looks like, 6:45. Anyone that would like copies of the fiscal 2017 budget, they're available for inspection in the town manager's and town clerk's office during town hall hours and Jacob Edwards Library during regular library hours. With that, the meeting is closed. We will be starting the regular council meeting at 7 o'clock, so we'll be recess, or I'll be, I guess not recessing, but we'll start at 7 o'clock.
Good evening. Welcome to tonight's council meeting here in council chambers, Monday, May 23, 2016, 7:00 PM. Before we go on to the pledge of allegiance, I'm going to ask to hold a moment of silence for the Auburn police officer, Ron Tarantino, who was, who lost his life in the line of duty. So if we may, please hold the moment of silence. Thank you. Agenda item number one, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item two, roll call, please.
Councillor O'Clair.
Present.
Councillor Carrasco.
Present.
Councillor Clements.
Present.
Councillor Estrada.
Present.
Councillor Manna.
Present.
Councillor Steves.
Present.
Councillor Viendo.
Excused.
Councillor Vecchia.
Excused.
Six present, two excused.
Thank you. Agenda item three, consider and accept town council meeting minutes of Monday, May 9, 2016.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, concerns, corrections? Seeing none. Simple handful, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Agenda item four, subcommittee reports. A, general government, councillor Clements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no meeting minutes, but we do have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday night, which is May 25, at 7:00 PM in the Rice Conference Room, first floor here at the town hall. There are six agenda items, which will include lease agreements and property and liability insurance. We're going to review some information on increases in Schedule 5, increases in Schedule 1, and appropriating free cash to a number of accounts. That's all I have.
Thank you. B, Department of Public Works, there is a meeting scheduled. Yeah, councillor Clements will be in charge of that meeting.
So that will also be on Wednesday. That one will start at 6:00 in the Rice Conference Room here at the town hall. A number of items, the Little League is requesting some batting cages on Henry Street. We're going to review some information on the bio tower replacement project, also some surplus vehicles and the actions we're taking, and Mass D E P's 2016 intended use plan. Thank you.
Thank you. C, Education and Human Services, councillor Steves.
We did have a meeting. I haven't had a chance to type up the minutes, but I do have my notes here, so I'll quickly summarize them because they're on the agenda tonight. One of the first item, or three items, one of us to discuss budget change number one for the Southbridge schools, to give them $46,000 extra. That came from, you may have seen the extra list here in budget change number one in Ron's memo, which summarized where they're coming from. $5,000 in the land management miscellaneous budget item, reducing the debt budget due to debt refunding of $25,000, eliminate article budget, prepare for sale of town-owned property of $6,000, and increasing the local receipts from the new contract for Crown Castle for the cell tower renewal of $10,000. That's also on our budget, on our item tonight. The second one was to discuss the transfer of $13,000 from town council reserve to the veterans benefits account to cover June costs. And that was, that was an issue of, that we had simply run out of money, and that with a funeral coming up, it'll leave only about $2,000 in the account. So Mike told us that he, and we've been spending $13,000 or $14,000 in benefits a month. We'll get 75%, reimbursement within a year from the date of spending it, and we get it quarterly. And also, the third item was to discuss funding for the VOC and 1-4 dioxide private well testing in an amount not to exceed $5,400, and we slightly changed that to be a specific sum of $5,400, although if anything, if any of the participants, or proposed participants do not participate, that will just fall back to the general fund. And that was, so that $5,400 was based on using a firm called Microback, which charges $150 a test. That was the second high, that was the second lowest of the four verbally requested bids, but the higher one, the lower one used an unimproved 1-4D test. So Andy suggested going to Microback instead. And all three of these items were approved by a four to nothing unanimous. And we do have a new meeting, a meeting scheduled tentatively for June 1 at 7:00.
Thank you. D, Planning Development, councillor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I don't have any meetings scheduled, and I do not have any minutes to read. I would like to let you know, though, that the meeting minutes for the DPW Subcommittee from April 14 were on, at your seats, so you should have them. Thank you.
Thank you. E, Protection of Persons and Property, councillor O'Clair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No meeting minutes and no meetings scheduled.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number five, chairman's announcements. I do have a few. Number one, I want to say thank you for an awesome time for the bicentennial parade. I want to say thank you to, first, the citizens of Southbridge, also neighboring towns that came out and supported and lined the streets up. It was an awesome time. It was great to see. Second, I want to thank honestly the bicentennial committee. Their hard work of three-plus years really paid off. And it's not over. We still have fireworks, and we still have another event, I believe, in October. But I really just want to say thank you to them for taking pride in truly the, for me, it restored somewhat of the pride of Southbridge. It was great to see so many faces out there, people just being part of our community and celebrating our birthday. And the third people I want to thank is the councilors and those, all the community organizations, the department heads, the departments, the schools, everybody that participated in it. Again, we must have had over 1,000 people participating in the parade, and then there was several thousand watching the parade. So it was a great time. It was an awesome moment of history, and I was glad to be a part of it. I was, I did, I did not walk much, but I did, I was able to drive councillor Vecchia, who wanted to be part of the parade and the festivities, and it was good to see him come out and see his recovery so far. Second, tomorrow is the 24th, is the Southbridge Lions Club bow ties for Esophageal Cancer Awareness Day. So therefore, tonight, I am wearing my bow tie in honor of Todd Sansucci. We are raising awareness of esophageal cancer, and we are Sansucci strong tonight. So again, if you have a bow tie and you want to come to work tomorrow with a bow tie, it would be a great idea to make it happen. But yes, we're trying to wear, raise awareness for esophageal cancer. That is it for my announcements tonight. Moving on to agenda item number six, town manager's announcements.
I was just thinking how I have no style, because I don't own any bow ties, so I'm going to have to like look at that issue. First, I also want to join the chairman in congratulating the bicentennial committee who did an awesome job, and it was great leadership, and I know Gus served in that, and Sean, and Steve, and a whole group of people that just worked their tails off. And I have to say, it was great, too, for me, watching all the different departments come together. The DPW did a phenomenal job, and the police and fire department, and it was, it was an amazing effort of cooperation among all the departments, and not one person complained to me about the work that was being done. They all just, you know, stood up and did what they had to do, and it was, it was really great to see it all come together. It was just frankly, a lot of fun to march in a parade, although some of us did drive ahead of us and didn't walk with us. But it was really a great, a great event. A couple of announcements that I want to make. The first one is from the Southbridge Police Department. It's to Heather Blakely, from Chief Shane Woodson, recognition of outstanding effort. Heather, last night I had a conversation with your operations manager, Ron Trudeau, and requested that your staff assist me with landscaping the outside grounds of the police headquarters. As you know, as the new chief, I have been taking steps to clean the general area outside of police headquarters in an effort to eliminate some of the blight in our community. Within a week of my request, Mr. Trudeau had several DPW employees assigned to police headquarters weeding, edging, and mulching our flower beds and performing other general landscape work at minimal cost to the town. If I would have hired a private company to perform this work, it would have been a substantial financial burden on my department budget. Please note that in all my previous professional dealings with Mr. Trudeau, he has never refused to help our department, and I truly appreciate the work he does serving our community on a daily basis. I would also like to commend the following DPW employees who are assigned to this project, John Alicia, Michael Zuzak, Jeff Boudette, I don't know if I'm saying it right, I apologize, Michael Pallone, David Martel, and David Lamontajane. Lamontajane?
Lamontajane.
Okay. All of their work was done professionally in a timely manner. I have said this before about some of these men in previous letters of recognition to you, but I think it's worth mentioning again that the town of Southbridge and the DPW should be proud to employ people of this quality. Signed, Chief Shane Woodson. Also, the Department of Public Health would like to make me, like me to have an announcement. The Board of Health would like to inform the council, citizens and businesses that on June 2, 2016, they will hold a hearing at 7:00 PM to consider adoption of tobacco regulation that would define municipal athletic fields, municipal playgrounds, and doorways of municipal and public buildings as no smoking areas. Anyone wishing to comment can present at the hearing, or we will accept written comments at the public, at the health department until noon on June 1. A copy of the proposed tobacco regulation can be located at the town clerk's office or the health department. With that, just another comment, I, we held the first meeting of the Drug and Alcohol Abuse Council, and I first want to thank all the different organizations that were involved in that meeting. I know the school system has people, Harrington Hospital, a number of treatment centers are involved, the Department of Public Health, the fire department, the police department, a group of leaders all coming together, Christopher O'Clair, our town council member, coming together to deal with the issue of drug and alcohol abuse, and I'm really proud of the group. It's a high-level group that's going to work horde, work hard to network around this issue and do what we can to hopefully save people's lives and to reduce this plague that's on our community. Also, we had a meeting of the, well, actually, a presentation regarding the master plan. I want to particularly thank all the department heads who were involved in the actual implementation of the master plan. A tremendous amount of work has been done on that plan by all the department heads and a lot of staff, and I want to give them credit because for quite a while, this plan has been sitting on a shelf, and it deserved tremendous praise for moving this plan forward. We still have a lot of work to do, but we're moving in a real positive direction, and I appreciate the last eight months of hard work by all of them to get where we are. So I appreciate that very, very much. The Veterans Agent asked me, also asked me to announce that we are having a Memorial Day Parade. We will be meeting at 8:30 here at town hall on Memorial Day for a parade, and we invite all the residents of Southbridge, obviously, to come to the parade to honor the men and women who have fought and died for this country. So I'm very pleased at the efforts of our veteran agent, and I'm told there's going to be quite a few ceremonies and a lot of discussion and praise for the people, and I think it's a fitting honor, and I'd love to see everybody there. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number seven, presentations, and there is none this evening. So we are quickly moving on to agenda item number eight, which is Citizens Forum. And at this time, I'm going to ask if you are a citizen that would like to address the council, please come, state, come, state your name and address, and make sure you keep
Good evening. My name is Wally McKenzie, and I live at 45 South Street in, here in Southbridge. And I did attend the bicentennial celebration. I watched the parade, and it was incredible. And I, I really felt that I had to come here and just give kudos and congratulations to the bicentennial committee. I have never seen Southbridge, I've been here for seven years, never seen Southbridge so unified, so together. It was wonderful to see. I thank the committee, the bicentennial committee, and I thank everyone who had an involvement. It was wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other citizen that would like to address the council, please come forward, state your name, your address, and please keep it respectful.
Hi, I'm Christopher Brier. I live at 25, 24 Hartwell Street, Southbridge here. I just wanted to say to the public, to let them know that we are diligently working in the back room in the, for the television station, and we will have a video out, the first video of many of the parade. So it's just to kind of make sure that the public has something to chew on since the parade, and then we're going to give them a lot more. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
First, I want to thank you and the volunteers that are actually working for public access to be able to put those on TV. You guys are kind of behind the scenes, nobody ever sees you, but it's a lot of work, and it's done frankly, at no cost to the town. So thank you and the other members that were involved in taping that parade.
I appreciate it, and I'm sure they do, too. So come on down and volunteer.
There you go.
Plenty of room.
Always looking for volunteers, yeah.
Plenty of room.
I have a quick question.
Councillor Steves.
I'm actually, excuse me. I had a quick question for you. You got to talk louder.
Chris, I had a quick question for you. Do you have a specific timeframe for when you're going to put the videos on? Because I know I've got calls, I assume several of us have.
We have, we have, for the major parade.
Yeah.
Film, the major one, we'll work on that diligently. Like I said, I would say maybe two to three weeks total, because we're going to do something special with that.
Okay.
But by the end of this week, I would hope, within two to three days, we'll have a basic parade again to appease, so don't think that that's the end-all, get-all. And after that, there's also, within three, two, five days, I had a surprise the other day, my daughter came to town, so I'm kind of off the edge. But we have a, the after-party, we will have that done as well, hopefully by Thursday, I would say.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So that'll give you a basic, and then we'll go from there and create some other things. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? We're good? Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council on something that's not on tonight's agenda? Going once? Going twice? We're moving on. Agenda item number nine, vote to adopt the FY 2017 Town of Southbridge General Fund operating budget per the attached voting document in the amount of $49,655,957, and to be funded as follows. Raise and appropriate $48,422,609. Transfer from other funds. Sale of street list books, $800. Capital operating account, $126...
Cable.
Cable, excuse me. Did I say something else? Excuse me. Cable operating account, $126,419. Septic loan program, $680,000. Debt service, am I off? I am off. Hold on. This is, hold on. Let me, let's start this one over. Excuse me. I need like a little bookmarker here, but these numbers are on. Sale of street lists, $800. Cable operating account, $126,419. Septic loan program, $6,046. Debt service reserve, $680,000. Perpetual care interest, $2,000. Armory debt service reserve, $52,124. Access road debt service, $290,765. Daycare debt service reserve, $9,653. Landfill reimbursement fund, $56,000. Sale of lots and graves, $5,000. Subtotal transfers from other available funds, $1228,807. At this time, I'm going to ask, do we have a, oh, wait a minute, excuse me. Other transfers, Bay Path bond premium, $4,541. Subtotal from other transfers, $4,541. Total general fund budget, $49,655,957. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Second. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Harneres to go through each of the town budgets, and what we're going to do tonight is when, if somebody has a question in regards to a particular budget, we're just going to, we just raise your hand, I will mark it, and we will answer those questions after Ms. Harneres goes through all the budgets that total the $49 million.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we're going to be going down the revised voting document that stated May 23 of 2016. Now, in this revised voting document includes budget change number one and budget change number two, and the town manager will explain a little.
Just give us a second for everybody to find the document. We've got quite an extensive packet here, but it's, it's titled Revised Voting Document, Town of Southbridge Fiscal Year 2017 Town Manager's Budget. It looks like this, for those of you looking for it. Just want to make sure we are on the same page here before we go.
It actually says, say, number nine on the top right corner.
Mine doesn't say number nine.
Mine does. Okay.
Give Kristen just another second. You got it?
I think so.
Okay, I just want to make sure you guys are all following through.
Okay. I think I just put everything together. You can go on, I'm, I'll catch up.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Okay, and just to clarify, the reason why it says revised is because, as the town manager mentioned, there are budget revisions, number one and number two, that were discussed at the subcommittees that are included in this revised voting document. So the first section will be general government. The FY 17 budget appropriation amounts. Town council, $15,950. Town manager, $272,408.
Just if I could, one more. If you have any objections as to the line items, please let us know to hold that item,
Town accountant, $154,927. Assessors, $191,373. Town attorney, $137,000. Election and registration, $67,767.
Skip town clerk.
I'm sorry. So after the town attorney was town clerk, $167,350. And then back to elections and registration, $67,767. Planning board, $22,362. Economic development, $59,00921. Cable TV advisory committee, $126,419. General government program accounts. Administration. Audit fees, $33,500. Copy machine costs, $18,000. Telephone, $41,000. Postage, $43,000. Natural gas, $45,000. Heating fuel, $110,000. Property management miscellaneous, $10,000. Land management miscellaneous is zero, and this is listed on here to show that subcommittee had voted to reduce this item to zero. Reserve for property repair, maintenance, and demolition, $50,000. Fuel and lubricants, $200,000, for a subtotal administration accounts of $550,500. Data processing, $190,945. Council reserve, $100,000. Contributory retirement, $367,673. Personnel accounts. Sick vacation leave buyback, $28,810. Recruitment and processing, $7,100. In-service training, $2,000. Employer Medicare tax, $127,000, for a total personnel of $164,910. Group health and life insurance, $3,500,000. General insurance. Workers' compensation, $165,625. Unemployment compensation, fifteen thousand. Property and liability insurance, three-hundred-and-five thousand. And deductible liability, two-thousand-five hundred, for a subtotal general insurance of five-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-three. Boards, committees, and commissions. Central mass regional planning, four thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars. Conservation commission, four hundred. Licensing board, five hundred. Historical commission, five hundred. Zoning Board of Appeals, five hundred. Subtotal boards and committees, six thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-seven. Debt service. Principal on debt, one million, eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, one-sixty-one. Interest on long-term debt, one million, seventeen thousand, nine-forty-one. Interest on short-term debt, five thousand. An issuance expense, one thousand, for a total debt service of two million, eight-sixty-two, Special accounts. Revaluation services, forty-five thousand. Ambulance billing services, thirty thousand. Medicaid billing, twenty-two thousand. Preparation for sale of town-owned property, this is another account that subcommittee voted to zero out, so that's a budget of zero. The Gatsby 45 OPEB actuarial study update, two thousand. Town manager adjustments, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, six-oh-five. And human resource study, eight thousand. For a subtotal special accounts, two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, six-oh-five. And that brings us to a general government total of twelve million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, and fifty dollars. And what we'll do this year, we're just going to do one vote on the big motion and second that we had. We're not going to vote any of the subtotals on there. So does anyone have any other questions or anything on this section?
Counselor Manor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Could you just explain the town manager's adjustments in Section 3 of the general government?
I'll refer to the town manager.
Thank you. As you recall, we are in negotiations with a variety of different unions. That account is to settle those collective bargain agreements for the fire department and the police department and non-union employees. That was what that money was set aside for.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll continue with public safety. Police, three million, four-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, three-seventeen. Fire and ambulance, two million, two-ninety-seven, six-twenty-two. Inspections, one-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, two-oh-six.
Hold.
Public safety program accounts, which is streetlights, one-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, for a public safety total of five million, nine-seventy-three, one-forty-five. Do you want to, do you want to discuss it now at the subtotal point? Because there was a hold on one of the accounts, right?
It actually, it actually would make more sense for you to go on, because I was going to actually put a hold on the health department as well, because they're tied together.
Okay. So I will continue.
I said I was going to put a hold on the health department as well.
Then we'll answer the questions, please.
Public works. DPW operations and administration, one million, six-seventy-three, seven-oh-one. DPW snow and ice, four hundred thousand, for a public works total of two million, seventy-three thousand, seven-oh-one. Human services. Health department, eight-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, nine-forty-seven.
Thank you. I got it.
Okay. Veterans and community center, ninety-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-six. Library, four-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, seven-fifty-two. Recreation, forty thousand, fifty-three dollars. EHS program accounts. Veterans benefits, one-hundred-and-forty thousand. Veterans memorials, two thousand, seven-hundred, for a total EHS program accounts of one-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, seven, with a human services total of one million, five-ninety-two, four-forty-eight. Education. Southbridge Public Schools, twenty-six million, one-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, four-hundred. The Bay Path, eight-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, six-seven-seven. Bay Path debt service, two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, five-thirty-six, for a total Bay Path assessment of a million, fifty-five dollars and two, a million, fifty-five, two-thirteen, with an education total, twenty-seven million, one-eighty-eight, six-one-three. And then we have our general fund totals, forty-nine million, six-fifty-five, nine-fifty-seven. So now I'll turn it back and we can go to the two departments.
Yep. There's, there's actually, I missed to raise my hand and say, hold on to departments of public works, but I, but let us go with the first department that's on hold is the inspections.
Okay.
I'll open up to Counselor...
Thank you very much.
Steves?
One thing I was, I wanted to just raise a concern because, can you hear me more clearly now at this point?
Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to raise a concern because I was approached by a couple of people and I've made a couple of phone calls, who were concerned about the potential issues about combining these two departments, which is, I know that's also an agenda item farther down the agenda, because we talk about doing Schedule 1 to approve positional changes at Number 20, which is associated with this, and that's on, and that's on general government on Wednesday. So I don't know why that's even on this agenda. But my point for this particular concern is, I was actually speaking to the state's, the state's building, the state's regional building inspector, and she said that she has had some experience with combined departments and didn't like the way it worked at all. That there were some issues with, with, part of, one of the biggest issues she was concerned about was the fact that Mass General Law, Chapter 143, Section 3, and the State Building Code, both specifically state, and I'm quoting, "Inspector of buildings or building commissioner shall report directly and be solely responsible to the person or public body that appointed him." In this case, that means the town manager. And she was concerned, or I'm concerned reading this, that that would be, create a kind of a conflicted line of, of control over whether this person is reporting to a joint health department, building inspector, because we're talking about creating a building, a deputy building inspector-commissioner, kind of, and there's, so there's some concern about that. So I just wanted to see how that would work out and whether, whether we can, whether we can address that issue.
So, for you, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
So I think a couple of questions. One is that the employee clearly does not work for the Board of Health. They work directly for me, both. Even the health agent, for practical purposes, works for me. Although both positions are required to do certain things under general statutes that I can't change. You know, they have to follow certain building codes. I can't tell them to do something that would break the law.
Absolutely.
All of them would be reporting direct to me for administrative purposes. That person would be under the health, the assistant building commissioner, which would be the title of the new position. That person, for administrative purposes, would be working under a health agent.
I know.
And that person, so he would be doing payroll, bookkeeping, he would be advising them, helping maybe potentially set up appointments for different things. But the ultimate authority of that person would come back to me. I would be the one that ultimately is responsible for that. Obviously, Andy and me would be communicating about that person, because he's in theory going to be the department head, but ultimately, I make the decision.
And one of the things I was concerned about is that she was, when I was talking to her, she was concerned about kind of, or the discussion I was having made, pointed out that there's really two levels of inspector. You've got your commissioner certification, and you've got a local inspector certification. Whereas the local inspector does residential stuff primarily, when you've got both of them. And that commissioner does the commercial and zoning stuff, the big picture kind of thing.
I think I can answer, but I prefer that it comes from more the expert than me. So I'm going to ask Andy to come up to adjust that question. I think he can answer it better than I can, so I want to make sure that you get the appropriate answer.
Good evening. When Ron came to Nick and I and said, "We're going to find a way to get that sign off the door, that somebody's out to lunch and there's nobody there to receive people, and also the council wants a full-time building inspector."
Right. Absolutely.
Nick, Ron, and I worked on this for months. One of the cogs of the whole scheme, not the scheme, I won't use that word, of the whole setup, is Mass General Law 143.
Right.
Which says, "Building commissioner shall report directly to the appointing authority." I came out of Auburn with all the credentialing for a health department. I have a CPO, I have an IRS, I have every, I have more initials after my name from health department. But I also had the local inspector on the building side. Within two months of getting the job in Southbridge, I attained the building commissioner card. So if named building commissioner, I am fully certified to do it, and I would be reporting directly to Mr. San Angelo.
And so if that's the case, then what is this assistant building commissioner going to do?
The reality is, we've tried to put health and code together in the past, and the workload was just impossible for one person to manage.
Right. Exactly.
We would be bringing on an assistant building inspector. And the reason we proposed this route was to get a qualified person to be the head would cost this town probably another ten thousand dollars. So by bringing on a fully qualified, the qualifications I would be looking for is this person would be qualified to hold this card. Because I want him to essentially run the department, to do all the technical part of the department. The only thing I'm going over there for would be to do the administrative part of this. And obviously to act as mediator, if you would, should code and health have a difference of opinion on how to attack a problem.
So in essence, then, you're looking for somebody who is in fact a building commissioner?
I'm looking for somebody who's qualified to be, yes. I'm looking for a very adept person to be over there, because reality, we have a landfill in town that is taking insane amounts of time.
Way too much time for everybody.
We have programs on the board of health side that need serious attention. I don't plan on spending ninety percent of my time, or even fifty percent of my time, directly on building department stuff. By accomplishing this, I'll be able to cut ten, fifteen percent of my time away, because we are also advancing the admin in my department to be an inspector and take some of the load off me. And the way we will do that is by combining the two admins into a one-and-a-half admin, so there'll be a full-time admin in the job at all times, and that extra half an admin will be out doing inspections, allowing me to free up some time to do the administration on the building side.
So in that case, then, do you think, honestly, either between you or Ron, that with this new assistant building commissioner-inspector, whatever his title actually will be, I mean, if he's certified as a building commissioner, why don't we just make him a building commissioner? And have Andy be his health director job, and have this building commissioner be the building commissioner? That was basically what, that's basically what Mrs. Reynolds was concerned about.
As Andy was saying, to get the title of commissioner would probably cost us additional ten grand, but as you recall, one of the problems we had is we had a part-time building inspector and a full-time secretary.
I know.
And we wanted to reverse that, to make it a full-time inspector and a part-time secretary. So by moving and combining to the health department, we can do that. We don't have to have, you know, another full-time secretary. So not only did it save us the ten thousand dollars in the salary, it's going to, we're going to add about nine hundred dollars to Andy's salary, and we're going to save about ten thousand dollars. We're also going to give some extra money to Marissa to pick up, and the specific inspections that we're talking about are food inspections. So by Marissa picking up some of the restaurant inspections, that'll free up some of Andy's time to be able to oversee the administrative side of that department. We also want to combine the departments in such a way that it makes it safer and we don't, right now we have a problem. If First Secretary of our inspections Department is sec, the office is essentially closed, and we don't want that. Or if she goes to lunch, the office becomes closed. We don't want that. We want the office to be open, you know, the whole time town hall is open to the citizens so that we can react to whatever's going on. It seems unfair to me that all of a sudden that office was closed and nobody was there.
Yeah, and I totally understand that. So if, if we approve doing this, when do you figure you will get this assistant building commissioner in place?
What our plan is, is if this is approved tonight, we would immediately begin getting ready to post that position, because Nick would like to leave at the end of June.
Yeah.
So we would like to have this person begin the beginning of July.
Are you assuming this person's going to be full-time?
What? Yeah, be full-time assistant building commissioner. That would be our intention, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Manor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to the town manager and whoever else wants to listen. I, too, was approached by a couple people in regards to this issue, and it got me thinking. And I, I believe, and I spoke with you about it this afternoon and last week, I also spoke with Mr. Pelletier, and I also spoke with Mr. Philbrook about things, too. I want, I needed to get a sense of why the health department and the building inspector, they were separated. And come to find out, it was Mr. Healy who, who made that decision, because it was a conflict with one person holding the two titles. And personally, I believe that the building inspector's office and the health department should be stayed separate. And Mr. Pelletier has so much on his plate, and like he mentioned, the landfill. Well, you know what? The landfill's taken up a lot of people's time. There are more things in this town than just the landfill. We have many, many issues, many programs that Mr. Pelletier could be working on, and you know, I mean, it's, it's taken up, it's all eaten up. So, so that concerns me as well. I, I, I'm sorry, I, I was like, kind of like distracted. So, I mean, I am concerned. I did, I did bring forward my concerns to you. I spoke with Andy about it as well. I mean, if this is, I know you're hiring a full-time inspector, commissioner, I should say. Those are two very big offices. They have big problems. Our town has big problems. We have buildings that are deteriorating. We have, we have a high asthma rate because of asbestos, because of lead paint. You know, we have absentee landlords that don't want to take care of any of their properties. You know, we have the landfill issue, we have, you know, we have restaurants that need to be inspected. There's many, many things. And Mr. Pelletier does a great job. I just don't want him to be overburdened, and I, I really feel that those two offices should be kept separate. However, if we need to vote on this tonight to get this, this ball rolling, I would ask that you look, you know, into this, you know, in the future and, and separate.
First, I want to thank Counselor Manor for coming to me to talk to me about this issue prior to tonight, so we could, could look at this issue in depth, and I appreciate Gus's comments as well. You're right, Counselor Manor. We believe that this is the best route forward. The council had made it pretty clear to me that they wanted a full-time inspector for all the reasons you outlined, that we need more support for looking at all these buildings that are in town that need that. And, and that's what this is going to give us. It's going to give us that role on a full-time basis of assistant commissioner to really actively engage all of those type of buildings. But we didn't really need the full-time secretary position. Frankly, to my opinion, it was overstaffed and not called for, and this reduces that. I agree with you. I, I understand the health agent's issue of, there's a lot of work going on, particularly with the landfill. So I don't disagree with you. That was why we really looked at the issue of having Marissa take on some of those restaurant inspections to take away some of the time that Andy would be working on, in order for him to put that little bit of time towards the administrative work. Because as Mr. Pelletier pointed out, and I discussed with you as well, I don't want Andy over there on a regular basis. I'm not, I'm not looking for Andy to run and be actively engaged in everything that's happening over there. We want a qualified person to do that. It's really just the smaller administrative paperwork kind of side is what we're looking at. But as I said to you on the phone, if I don't feel this is working, if I don't feel that this is saving us money, and if I feel like we need more help on the commissioner level and separate it, I will offer to, to go back to the role if we need to do that.
And I, and I appreciate that very much. And I, I do want to say one thing. You know, I've said this plenty of times in the past, and I'm going to say it again. You can't put a Band-Aid on an open wound and expect it to heal. You can't short-change some of the departments, and I'm not saying that's what's being done, but if we are not fiscally responsible in that aspect, in funding the departments and what they need, and investing in our community, then we're never, that wound is never going to heal. It's just going to get worse. It's going to fester. So, and that's, I really appreciate you looking back into this, and Southbridge needs this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Manor. Counselor O'Clair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I guess I just wanted to comment on this. I mean, I, maybe I'm just not seeing what other people are seeing, but what I see is a part-time position in the building inspector moving up to a full-time assistant position, and somebody in the health office moving a little bit of their responsibility over, but also getting support from within their office from somebody who's very well-qualified and has been kind of, from what I can see from the outside, groomed to start taking this position. I think that it's fiscally responsible to take these resources that we have and have a dual role in that, in that sense, especially when we have the person that has those qualifications, such as Andy has. such as Andy has. Also, I mean, I like the idea that the Health Director role right now is a very, very, very time-consuming one, but Cassell is not gonna be here forever. At some point, the responsibilities of the landfill and that kind of oversight are going to slowly start to diminish. And I think that this gives the town everything that we need as far as the Building Department goes and also kind of sets ourselves up for the future as well. So unless I'm missing something, I agree with the new restructuring of the office and I just wanted to explain that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Steves.
I just had one quick question. As far as funding these departments, have we looked at what the permit fees are? Because one of the things that the, one of the things that the, okay, one of the things that the State Building Inspector, when I was talking to her, commented on is that in many cases, towns, towns, especially building departments, basically self-fund with their permit fees. Have we looked at what the status for the, what our permit fees look like?
That is true and sometimes they have a lot of growth. If you have a lot of new building going on, there's fees and everything else, and actually Fund Department, as you know, that's not our case.
Right.
So really, I think, you know, frankly, I wish it was the case because that means we'd have a lot of growth and there'd be a lot of building fees. We just don't raise to that kind of level in this town. But I appreciate it and I wish we did.
I just have one question, if I may. Because I know Andy, you mentioned $10,000 just for the full-time inspector. But this would cost a whole more than just $10,000 because, or is it just $10,000 that we're talking about?
$10,000. I'm sorry, $10,000 plus the difference between a part-time Secretary and a full-time Secretary. That's the savings here, with the exception of about $900 in Andy and a couple of thousand dollars for the upgrade of Marissa's position. So it's about, I would say it's about a net $7,000 change, savings to the town. $7,000 of savings, net savings to the town, if that's about right. Andy, am I correct in that? Am I thinking a little different?
I don't know the exact math. I know one of the goals Mr. San Angelo gave me and Nick was to make this an even funded change and we came back with, I think it was like $11,000 separation and I said, I can't, I can't make it even funded. If he wanted to go, that $11,000 was going to be more like $20,000 if he went for a quality Building Inspector.
So I think my question, if I'm not phrasing it correctly, is, so in order for us to say, if the will of the council was to, let's restore this position back to where it was or how it currently is with a full-time, well, not as it currently is, as it was a year ago, full-time inspector, full-time secretary, what is that number? Maybe Karen can help me. Because if it's a $7,000 difference, I think, I'm assuming, I'm assuming it's gonna be more because you're talking benefits, you're talking hours, again, but I just don't want the public to say, we're making this huge change for $7,000. Because I don't think it's $7,000.
If we were going to keep things as they are. $7,000 plus half the secretary, from the difference from a part-time Secretary to a full-time Secretary, plus whatever benefits that would be involved in the full-time versus part-time, right?
Correct.
Which is, I think, about 15 grand.
I actually requested that my position be raised and my step be lowered so that my salary going into this is almost even. There's very little salary on my side, so I could save that to put towards the Building Inspector. The $30,000 from Nick's salary, the 20 or 19-something from, from half of the admin's salary and the fact that I will not be going into this with a significant raise, I would have been getting that raise by going the next step in August anyhow, or October anyhow. So essentially, what we're doing is, my step raise will end up being in July instead of October. So there's like five months of benefit to me. After that, it would have been close to even money.
So Karen, read the numbers.
So I, my question is, I would like to know, like, a small breakdown, are we talking 7,000, 15,000, or are we talking 25 to 50,000 in a savings?
To my best recollection, my number was $11,000. And it's an $11,000 increase over current.
It is not a decrease.
It's not a decrease. We're not saving money over current. We're getting better services. But it was like an 11, I thought it was an $11,000 increase over current, but it was significantly below a year ago when, when the Building Inspector was full-time.
Correct.
So it falls between them.
I have Councilor Clemens and then Councilor O'Clair.
That's what I just wanted to question. Obviously, it's $11,000 because, but the benefit of what we're getting in terms of extra coverage, extra, full-time, full-time inspector and such outweighs the decrease that we, you know, we've gone down and that's been a problem for the past year in terms of not having enough coverage. Also, it's a combined, I like the idea of the combined of the office structure in itself. I think it'll be more efficient when you put more people into one specific area for coverage purposes, as you said, to provide better service. To get better service, you have increased oversight and economies of scale coming together. So.
One of the primary goals was to make sure the offices were covered 100% of the time. People coming into an empty office, it's just, it doesn't make the town of Southbridge look good.
Councilor O'Clair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So the $11,000 that we're talking about, I think that the more important number is to look at if we were to increase, I mean, everybody wants a full-time Building Inspector. So I think that the number to look at is what it would cost to have a full-time Building Inspector with the structure that it is now, instead of kind of creating this dual role, this better service. And I mean, you're going, I think, the salary difference alone between a full-time, like, Building Inspector and the Assistant Building Inspector was about $20,000, correct?
Between $10,000.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's saving the town money in that respect and I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in regards to this section? Councilor Manor?
I'd just like to thank the Town Manager for looking into that and, you know, and if we could revisit just to make sure everything is working out smoothly, I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it, appreciate it.
Thank you, and I thank Mr. Pelletier as well.
If I, if I can just make one last comment to your numbers, and this is just real quick math with Karen. When the Building Inspector was full-time, he was making about 70,000. The full-time admin is making approximately 40,000, making it 110,000 for the two positions. We are taking on the full-time Assistant Building Commissioner for approximately 60 and the part-time admin will be 20, just under 20, I believe. So we are now looking at 80, there's, it's more than, it's more than it's costing now by about 10 or 11,000, but it's close to 30,000 less than it was costing a year ago.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions in regards to inspections in this section of the budget? So the next one that would be on hold would be the Department of Public Works/Operations and that would be me. I have a comment in regards to this section. I just, I understand that the charter changes are up to, to the people of Southbridge to vote. So my understanding is that once that gets passed, if I may, please correct me, Mr. Town Manager, it is our intentions to quickly start the hiring process in regards to the new charter changes in regards to the DPW Director's Salary.
That's correct. So the, after the date of the election, it'll be effective, the charter changes from that day. It would be our intention to move forward with the DPW position first and put that on, post it and then after that, we would be doing the, whatever the title of that is, Assistant DPW Director, or whatever that title is right after that. So it would be quickly filled. Mr. Chair had asked me this question prior to this meeting and we had discussed it and we actually called a representative to make sure that the charter changes were done. He did let us know that the charter changes have been completed. They are now in our Town Clerk's Office. They will be on the ballot and after that, day after the election, we'll move forward with that.
It's, my concern is just because over the past year, we've used this money as kind of, sorry for the lack of words, but like a monopoly. We take it from here to pay for this service and a lot of it's been paid for engineering services and I understand that. But again, I don't like being in the habit of taking from one item, line item, to use it for something else. And my original suggestion was to freeze this line item until that position or was to be filled, but obviously, it's gonna be happening very quick. So again, I just, I want to see this process going. I understand that there's a charter change, but again, I just don't like this shifting that happens and I understand some of the services that it was providing for. But again, we all know the, the conditions of our roads and the DPW does do a good job with the manpower they have. It's one of the departments that has the few people and troops on the ground, but they do do a good job, but our roads are in a really tough position. But I just don't like being in this position where we're taking from Peter to pay Paul and I just don't like that. So I'd rather continue to monitor that and I would like to see somebody in that place, whether, whoever it is, but let's get that ball rolling. It's been way too long.
Soon as that charter change will be rolled, right after.
Moving on.
I'm sorry, can I just comment on that through you, Mr. Chair? I didn't have a chance to read the meeting minutes from the Subcommittee Budget Meeting for the DPW, but there was actually a decrease. Oh no, there was a small increase, but nothing major has changed in this budget and there was only, there was only a couple line items changed, but those were necessary changes. So I don't see where we're pulling from here and there. I think the conflict was the charter itself, so.
No, I think you're misunderstanding me, Councilor Manor.
I think I did. Because I just like, I'm confused on it.
What I'm saying is that the line item of this past budget for the Director's Salary, because this Director's Salary of $104,000 was in there last year. Currently, Ms. Blakely was another line item, but this $104,000 was used, a lot of it was used to pay for engineering services. We paid individuals $60 an hour, 20 hours a week and that was the line item where that money was coming out of. And this is where I'm saying, I don't like that process. I'd rather, let's get this ball rolling so we can hire somebody and if we cannot start using somebody else's.
Well, thank you for, thank you for clearing that up because I was a little confused on that because I didn't feel we were robbing anybody, but thank you for clearing that up. Thank you.
Moving on to the next item that is on hold, the Health Department. Do we really need to go back to that or the questions were answered?
That was already addressed, thank you.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second on the table for Agenda Item Number Nine for the total general fund budget of $49,655,957. Discussion is over. Roll call, please.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor O'Clair?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manor?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 10, vote to appropriate the amount of $3,432,453 for the fiscal year 2017 Sewer Enterprise Fund budget to be raised from the sewer user charges and other departmental revenues.
So moved.
Take up.
At this time, I'll ask Ms. Harneish to read that again, or do we have that?
And there is no further detail on that. That's the total budget to be supported by the sewer charges and the departmental revenues.
Any questions? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor O'Clair?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manor?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 11, vote to appropriate the amount of $3,244,661 for the fiscal year 2017 Water Enterprise Fund to be raised from water user charges and other department revenues.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manor?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yeah.
Councilor O'Clair?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 12, vote to appropriate the amount of $375,000 from the landfill royalty receipt reserved account number 6790 in fiscal year 2017 contributory retirement account.
So moved.
Take up.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manor?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yeah.
Councilor O'Clair?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 13, vote that the sum of $125,000 shall be appropriated from the landfill royalty receipt reserve account 6790 as the first payment into the OPEB trust fund for the fiscal year 2017.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
I've had a quick question. If I remember correctly, this is significantly lower than what we appropriated for last year, right?
No, only because we do two payments. So this is the first of two.
But, but last year?
Same amount, for the same, yeah. It's a million dollars total, 750 for the pension and 250,000 for the OPEB benefits. So we're doing half of that right now.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
How many times do they come pay? How many times do they come pay for the, the, to pay?
There's two payments.
Two payments?
Generally, there's two payments. In past years, that's what we've done. We've made two payments. We do half at a time and it's a half a million dollars each, each series of payments, right? So it's, it's the 375 and 125 and then one more payment of 375 and 125 and then puts a full million dollars in those two accounts. So 750,000 and 1, 250,000.
All set?
That's it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manor?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yeah.
Councilor O'Clair?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 14, vote to reauthorize the Leased Properties Revolving Fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, to pay repairs, improvements, expenses and utilities for all town-owned leased properties from lease payments to be deposited in the account with all expenditures to be approved by the Town Manager and, and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $100,000 per year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Manor?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yeah.
Councilor O'Clair?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 15, vote to reauthorize the Southbridge Airport Leased Properties Revolving Fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, to pay repairs, improvements, expenses and utilities for the leased property at the Southbridge Municipal Airport from lease payments to be deposited into the account with all expenditures to be approved by the Town Manager and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $180,000 per year.
So moved.
So moved.
Take up.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda number 16, vote to reauthorize the totter maintenance revolving fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, to pay for the replacement of lost and/or damaged totters from fees by owners and deposited into account with all expenditures to be approved by the Health Department and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $5,000 per year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda item number 17, vote to reauthorize the demolition of buildings revolving fund under the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, to pay expenses associated with the demolition of buildings within the town of Southbridge and any revenue recaptured to be deposited into the account with all expenditures from the account not to exceed $185,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Steves?
Um, I don't know if this is through you or to you or to Mindy Ryan, but how much did we actually, how much ended, ended up actually going through this account? Because I know we put.
Very, very tiny amount.
Yeah.
Because we put the liens on these properties, but the people are gone, so we really haven't collected hardly anything. So it's meager. So I mean, I don't know the exact number, but it's very, very small.
Do, do you have, do you have any idea of how we might be able to get a, get a more, get, get these people to more effectively pay up?
Well, the, the issue here, these are the, the landlords that essentially own the property and they walk away, they have no assets, so you can't go after them. So what we do is we lien the building and the land, then, as you know, we've been ripping down the buildings, now we still have a lien on the land. We could put those land back up for auction and then if we, when we do, that money would come into this account, but there hasn't been much of that yet.
Yeah. That's what I expected.
All set? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda number 18, vote to reauthorize the municipal hearing officer revolving count, uh, fund, excuse me, under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, to pay expenses associated with the administration and the collection of fines in violation of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 148A and Chapter 115 of the Acts of 2009. Such fines to be deposited into, in the account with all expenditures to be approved by the town manager and total expenditures from the account not to exceed 22,500.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda number 19, vote to reauthorize the Southbridge Middle High School Store Revolving Fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, to pay the expenses associated with the school store from receipts to be deposited into the account with all expenditures to be approved by the school superintendent and the total expenditures from this account not to exceed $30,000 per year.
So moved.
Second. I do have a question in regards to this item. How long are we going to carry this account now that the state has taken over?
Well, the, I'm going to ask Karen, but I think that about $10,000 from our discussion today goes, is gone into that account. It's not a real lot of money, but the revolving account, even though, Karen, even though it's a, the state is controlling the education system, it, it still stays under the town. It doesn't go under the, what would normally be the school committee? Why is it a town revolving account, I think is the chairman's question.
It still would be considered a school revolving because it's under the school, it's the school store. And the expenditures can, can still be put through with the, um, the permission of the receiver.
Yes, but I, I just, why are we doing it? Why can't they do this? Is there something specific that, why we, it's our oversight? I know in the past, it's because of maybe the lack of transparency, maybe lack of issues, but seeing now that the state's here, do we really need to task our financial team to track another account?
Yeah, this is one of the revolving accounts that isn't automatically authorized under the law. So in order for them to have this account, it has to be under the Chapter 4453 E and a half, which just happens to fall under the town council's purview.
Thank you. Enough said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Six yes.
Agenda item number 20, vote to amend Schedule I to approve positional changes as proposed.
So moved.
Take up.
Discussion. Counselor Steves?
Actually, I would, I would actually like to move to postpone this because this is on general government later this week. We haven't even discussed this yet.
Can't understand a word.
I want to, I would like to move to postpone this because we have, we haven't even discussed this yet. This is on general government's agenda later this week.
This is, this is the position we just finished talking about with the health director and assistant commissioner.
I know, but, but it's actually on general government's agenda later this week.
Not exactly.
Counselor Clements?
Well, isn't it through you, Mr. Chair? Isn't this the positional change, not the increased change? The Schedule I change, increased change will be discussed at general government.
I believe that is true.
Because the position, do we have to allocate the position? That's.
If, if you look at the, the attached documents, it is the positional changes. It's, it's not talking about salary increases. It's, they're highlighted in yellow.
Oh, okay.
Well, here it's an increase for the schedules, Gus.
They're showing you the schedules, but it's the, it's the yellow you're looking at.
Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the town manager. You know, I understood, oops, sorry, I understood the, um, the, the positions for the inspections and, and the Health Department and stuff. The town planner, you have that highlighted on page two.
Trying to remember the reason for that. Karen, you want to help me with this? And I just don't remember the reason why the planner was put in here compared to what it used to be.
It was because it was an oversight that it wasn't put in there a year ago when, um, the town planner's part-time position was put into the budget. It should have, that position should have been added onto Schedule I. So we're just catching up with that. It's not a new position. It's just to put that in the range, the S7 where we've been paying it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on agenda item number 20? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda number 21, vote to transfer 13,000 from Town Council Reserve Account Number 1-1, excuse me, 1 period 132 period 5781 to Veterans Benefit Account, 1 period 945 period 5771 period 0 period 596 to pay benefits for the month of June.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Agenda number 22, vote to ratify funding for VOC and 1-4 dioxine private well testing with a cost to the town of $150 per home and the amount of $5,400 to be appropriated from Project 6790 Landfill Royalty Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Chairman? Sorry, if I may. Before you may, I just want to open it up to the council if they have any discussion in regards to this matter right now. Mr. Palowski, please state your name and address and please keep it respectful.
John Palowski of Three Genuson Street. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I respectfully ask that if you can, consider postponing this until the next meeting and asking the landfill operator, because this was some promise eight years ago, that all this testing would be paid for by the operator. It may be in legal language even, in contracts. I know there were changes afterwards with Mr. Healy, maybe it's changed, but perhaps they might, over and above, so it doesn't come out of the landfill fund, but instead of it coming out of that $6 a ton, it becomes something over and above where they possibly volunteer to provide those funds themselves. I don't think it's fair that they're paying the testing of the wells in Charlton, but not the wells in Southbridge. I mean, I'm glad Charlton doesn't have to pay, but I don't like that Southbridge has to pay for this. We could use that money for other things, whether it's, it's up to you people, that's why you're elected, whether it's school books or, or more money to celebrate our bicentennial, whatever it might be. But instead of, and, and we could at least ask them, and they may tell us, you know, go fly a kite, you, you pay for it, but they're paying for it in Charlton, I don't see why they can't pay for it in Southbridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I, I guess I would, I would like to ask Andy to comment on this. Obviously, this came as a result of discussions at the Board of Health meetings and the decision made by the Board of Health. I think the intent, the thought of a lot of people is they don't believe that there's any contamination going to be found in those wells, but because the people were concerned and they were Southbridge residents, that we thought, uh, the, the Board of Health thought that they should act quickly and move this forward to make them feel comfortable. But Andy, you want to comment more about that? And I, I think you could, of course, you could always ask for Casella for more money, but I think probably we just want to move this forward and get it done.
The, um, the reason they pay him for the well testing in Charlton is because as part of the permitting for Cell 7, they were required to test within a half a mile every well, within a half a mile of Cell 7. The houses in Southbridge do not fall within that half mile zone. Now, all the testing they've done so far seems to indicate that the water flows to the northwest. If, if water were passing through the landfill, it would flow towards the northwest Berry Corner Road area. We tested wells at the airport and they came up clean. There's no reason to suspect that this is coming from the landfill because there's nothing between the landfill and these houses that has indicated it. So the Board of Health recognized that there is contamination on that hill coming from somewhere. They are not ready to say it's from the landfill yet. They're not denying it, but they are not ready to say it is until the, till all the testing comes in. At this point, we want to see how widespread that is. It's not necessarily a landfill or an SRD burden, it's a public health burden. So because everything indicates that this, that the flow is going northwest away from these houses, um, the Board of Health opted to pay for VOCs. And the reason they'll pay for VOCs is in your normal well testing, you wouldn't normally get VOCs, but they also took a stance that if we're looking for safe or unsafe drinking water, we're going to look for safe and unsafe drinking water. So to engage in this program with the Board of Health, the people will have to pay for a standard well test. It's just an opportunity to open people's eyes that you can't just dig a hole in the ground, stick a cup in there and drink it, whether it's VOCs, E. coli, bacterials, nitrates, there's always a potential there's something there and the people should be made, made aware of it. So I would strongly recommend that we keep this in the town funding unless there's a reason that we could blame the landfill for it.
Counselor Steves?
Actually, I, this is a question I should have asked during the subcommittee, but I didn't think of it. Do you, how many of these potential participants in this testing round are actually part of the quarterly tests that, that Casella rotates over the course of time?
None of these houses are within a half a mile of Cell 7.
No, no, not Cell 7. I mean the ones that, remember back in 2012, we had, we had well testing results from tie and bond and all of those, those, the well tests that, that routinely happen, not just the Cell 7 tests. The ones that, that there are, that sample, they're household wells that are sampled around the landfill, like, what is it? I think they're quarterly and they rotate so that they, so that everybody in a certain group of houses gets tested, but not every year.
They do, they do monitoring wells around the landfill quarterly. They do surface water around the landfill quarterly and there are multiple houses in Charlton that are within a half a mile of Cell 7.
Right.
That they do on a, one-third of them get done each year. So on a three-year cycle, they all get done.
But they're all in Charlton.
But those are per DEP permit demand and those are within a half a mile of Cell 7. I am not aware of any history of any wells in Southbridge being required to be, any private wells in Southbridge being required to be tested.
Okay, maybe I confused things, then, thank you.
Any other further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda number 23, vote to increase the limit amount that may be spent from the Southbridge Airport Leased Property Revolving Fund from $100,000 to $150,000 for fiscal year 2016.
So moved.
Take up.
Any discussion? Counselor Steves?
Um, yeah, didn't we just, the airport leased property, didn't we just hike it, didn't we just approve it as 180,000?
No.
That was question, that was item 15.
From the discussion I had with Karen today, the amount was always $100,000, but she felt dollars, but she felt that we might go over that a hundred thousand dollars this year, and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars was to make, to make sure that we stayed within the limit, but, but up until recently, I think we were under a hundred thousand, and recently have increased over that.
No, my, my point is, you look at, the item we just approved on, Agenda item number fifteen, puts it at a hundred and eighty thousand.
Not to exceed.
Yeah, exactly. Not to exceed a hundred and eighty thousand, so this is, this is, this is a moot point, because it's already under, it's already over a hundred and fifty thousand.
So you're saying there's conflict with item number fifteen?
Yeah.
And item number twenty-three. If you would, Karen, explain that, or if, does it need to be adjusted in any other way, up to a hundred and eighty?
This agenda item, that's up for consideration now, is for an increase for fiscal year sixteen, because in recently monitoring the revolving account, the expenditures were getting close to a hundred thousand, so I didn't want to go over, and it would be in violation, so I'm just saying, to give us that extra there. But, you know, with the increase in the fuel costs and the different things, we may be more than a hundred and fifty thousand for next fiscal year, so I'm just trying to cover all the bases. So this one's fiscal sixteen, the other one's fiscal seventeen.
Okay, okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councillor Clements?
Yes.
Councillor Estrada?
Yes.
Councillor Mina?
Yes.
Councillor Steves?
Yes.
Councillor O'Clair?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion carries. Before we go on to Agenda item number twenty-four, I just want to say thank you to the town manager, the department heads, the counselors, each subcommittee, that we spent hours and hours debating line item by line item, talking about it. Again, thank you for once again pulling it together, and, uh, one of the last requests that we had made was to try to find forty-six thousand dollars for the school department, and, um, our town manager and our town finances team went back to the drawing board and did find an, an additional forty-six thousand for the school department during this fiscal year's budget, and I just, as the chairman of this sitting council, I, I just want to say thank you for a job well done to all the players involved.
Thank you.
Agenda item number twenty-four, Counselors Forum, we'll start with Councillor Mina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, through you. Um, the town manager brought up something, um, when he was speaking in regards to charter changes. They're going to be on the June twenty-eighth ballot. It's up to you. It is your charter. Get out there and vote. There's a few charter changes. They're not as controversial as a few years ago, but it is your charter, and you should be voting on those changes. It's your government, so I'm just going to continue to say that and, until the end of June. Um, I, I would also like to thank the Bicentennial Committee. I know it was a small committee, they did a lot. They were overwhelmed with some things, I am sure, being such a small committee, but they did a marvelous job. The parade was just fantastic. I have never seen that many people lined up on the street just cheering Southbridge on. It, it was just, it was absolutely amazing. Couldn't have asked for a better day with the weather. There was no rain. The festival was, it was a lot of fun, listening to the bands. It, it was just a good day all around. August thirteenth, yes, you're going to have the fireworks. I won't be here for the fireworks, unfortunately. I will be seeing other fireworks in Virginia as my son's getting married, so, um, and I think that's about it. But yes, I will be next, mentioning at the next town council meeting again, the charter changes on June twenty-eighth. It's up to you. Get out there and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just one quick thing, um, I wanted to say also thank you to the DPW and to the police department for all of their assistance during the case, during the bicentennial parade and fi, and festival. Um, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that the people on the sides of the street or even in the, in the parade themselves didn't necessarily see that, that they, that those guys need to be thanked for, because I was, I know I spend most of the day at the field and trying to build some, like, stages and all that kind of other stuff, and doing all the running around and with Mike and the other, maybe six or seven or ten people that were there bouncing between places, and, and a lot of that stuff wouldn't have been possible if the DPW and, and police weren't out on the streets doing the stuff that they do, and allowing us to get into the DPW, willing to dump off signs and stuff like that at weird hours and stuff like that, so definitely want to thank them for that. Um, and also speaking on, as far as the bicentennial thing goes, we do still have, and we're still looking for people to submit their memories for the bicentennial book, pictures, poetry, drawings, whatever you have that you would like to be commemorated in print. Please let us know. You can get in touch with us, um, you can, you can send it to me at Gus, at Councillor Gus at gmail dot com. You can send it to anybody who's at the bicentennial committee, um, you can look at our website, you can put it on our website as well, and we can take it off there and put it in the book. And we're looking for people who want to participate and get, to keep, get this, to get, to get, create something that's going to be really memorable, to keep going forward, because it's not done yet, so, thank you very much, and, thanks.
All right. Councillor Estrada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And you know also, Mr. Town Manager, Mr. Carrasco, Wally McKenzie, the other council, I want to thank the all citizens for the great support of the Bicentennial Paradise. I'm happy, oh my God, the big support, I'm very excited to the people. This week, I'm going to see from, with family and good neighbors. I need for more cultural service and more cultural program for the, the next year, the next year, the next year, the year. And, one more time, um, thank you for my, my, my chairs, the, for helping me the last Saturday, for cleaning the street, for cleaning the, the Hamilton Street, Union Street, Cross Street, Main Street. Thank you.
All set? Thank you. Councillor Clements?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to commend the substance abuse panel that's been formed. I think that it's wonderful that they're stepping up and collaborating and putting together a unit that will hopefully combat and attack this opiate crisis and other substance abuse problems that we have, not only locally but beyond. I had the opportunity to attend the fundraiser that was held at the conference center this weekend. Great turnout to help provide funding for a sixteen-bed dual diagnosis behavioral health and substance abuse unit that's being put together by Harrington Hospital at the Webster Campus. As I said, it was a great turnout, a lot of people were opening their, opening their checkbooks to make sure that this gets done. Unfortunately, as the panel knows, and, and many of us know, there's just not enough availability of beds and, and programs out there to help combat this, so I think it's wonderful, um, the turnout that happened and all those that participated and gave their time and energy, especially a shout out to Michelle and Joe who co-chaired the event. Our lieutenant governor was there, and the stories and the information that was gathered by all, I think, was very much appreciated and, and heart, heartwarming and, and sad all at the same time, so, um, I think it's great that we are lucky here in this community to have a hospital, and, um, all that goes with it in terms of, um, opportunity for us to have great healthcare and, and services, so I just want us to remember that, it's a positive thing. And, uh, I heard so many great comments about the parade. As I said, I wasn't here at graduation, last one done, yay, but, uh, only wonderful comments, a, as we heard again tonight, did manage to make it out to the festival and saw the people seeming to enjoy themselves out there in the afternoon, but, uh, couldn't, couldn't be said, the streets were so clean, the, the work that was done by everybody. As everyone else has said, I commend you for, for all your hard work and the time and energy it took to, to really put on such a great event for so many others. And I've got people, out of town people, a lot of different comments from everybody about that, and they hadn't seen Southbridge look so great. And it still looks great, by the way, and let's keep the efforts up to keep it that way, because right now, things look really good out there, and, and I hope that everybody takes it to heart and goes out and picks up after themselves and those around them. You see a can on the ground, pick it up, put it in the trash can. On that note, I do have a question. I noticed on Main Street, I don't know if it's because of the sidewalk project, but I was walking past, um, the corner, Zoe's on the corner, and there was no trash can at all from the crosswalk, the, the furthest trash can, because we saw trash on the street, and I went to pick it up to throw it in, there used to be a trash can in that area somewhere, and there isn't, and I don't know if that's something that can be replaced. All I know is that there was nowhere to put anything in that entire corner section. Um, I did see it up past the crosswalk, but nothing right in that area, which gets a lot of traffic from the intersection, so if we can look into why, and if it can be replaced, that would be really great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor O'Clair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I just want to thank also, I mean, I'm just going to echo pretty much what everybody else said about the bicentennial, about how, um, great it was. Big thanks to everybody who, um, participated and all of the hard work that went through it. For a small committee or a small group of committees, um, the turnout and the work put in and, and everything, um, it was, it was really, really impressive. Definitely a lot to be said for community pride. I've never seen the streets of Southbridge look that way, um, and as a lifelong resident, it was, it was really, really nice to see. Um, I also want to thank, um, I also want to thank, uh, the DPW department, the police, everybody who had, um, who had a, a part in that day as well, and that's all I have for this week. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda item number twenty-five, discussion of next meeting date. It is Monday, June sixth, two thousand sixteen, here at seven PM in council chambers. So Agenda item number twenty-six is vote to enter into executive session according to Mass. General Laws, Chapter thirty, A, Section twenty-one A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and entertain a motion to return to open council for vote.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councillor Clements?
Yes.
Councillor Estrada?
Yes.
Councillor Mina?
Yes.
Councillor Steves?
Yeah.
Councillor O'Clair?
Yes.
Councillor Carrasco?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. We shall be back. We're back from executive session, and I just would like to have a roll call, please. Just a roll call that everybody's back in.
Uh, Councillor O'Clair?
Present.
Councillor Carrasco?
Present.
Councillor Clements?
Present.
Councillor Estrada?
Present.
Councillor Mina?
Present.
Councillor Steves?
Present.
Six present.
Thank you. At this time?
We're getting feedback or something.
At this time?
I'd like to make a motion that we vote to appropriate thirty thousand dollars to fund the memorandum of agreement between the International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO Local Two-One-Nine-Four, and the town of Southbridge, by transferring thirty thousand dollars from the town manager's adjustment account, number zero-zero-one-point-zero-two-two-zero-point-five-one-one-zero, fire department salaries and wages.
So moved.
Second. Any?